Okay, I'm here tonight to talk about our literacy framework for the Ponca City Public Schools. And just to clarify and hopefully to educate everybody on what the foundation of our literacy program is. And then, once we have that in place, our framework, then what we have to do regarding curriculum and adopting curriculum and getting curriculum in place. And then, what we have to do for training because a lot of times, Barbara and I are asking you guys to support different curriculums or we're throwing out a lot of words like RTI and tiered instruction. And we're talking about a lot of different programs. And hopefully, once I go through this, that will help you to understand a little bit better about the framework and sort of our foundations and why we have those in place. And I hope I hit the right button. Right here?
Yes.
Okay. Literacy First, and you heard Mrs. Cox referring to this a little bit as she was talking about her improvement, is literacy first. And we talk about literacy first a lot. Literacy First is our framework. Literacy First is not a program. It's not a curriculum. It's a research-based framework of best practices and different strategies that we train all our people in to create a literacy-rich environment. And our framework focuses on the five essential components of a well-rounded literacy program, which includes phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension, and fluency. These are the five essential components that should be the core of every one of our tier, tier-one instructions. That happens. Once we get to tier two and three, then you may be focusing on one of these if a student has not gotten, has a hole in one of these areas. But overall, this is, these five essential components should be in every tier, tier-one classroom.
Terry, you might define tier-one. What is tier-one instruction?
And I will be getting to that a little bit later. So hopefully, that'll clear it up for you. The essential five, I just thought I'd go over a little bit what those mean. And I'm going to try not to talk too long. As you can see, phonemic awareness. Phonemic awareness is a little bit hard to explain. But basically, phonemic awareness is the sounds. It's what you hear. It's what a student hears. Phonics are like the letters and the sounds that those letters represent. But phonological awareness is the ability to recognize that words are made up of a variety of sound units. The term encompasses a number of sound-related skills like rhyming that are necessary for a person to develop as a reader. As a child develops their phonological awareness, he or she not only comes to understand that the words are made up of small sound units called phonemes, but they learn that they are segmented into chunks or syllables. So I pass out to each of you our literacy-first continuum. And if you'll take a look at this real quick, this may help you to understand a little bit. I have it on a slide, but you can't see it on the slide. If you look at the very top, this is a tracking form that we use for each student in the Ponca City Public Schools. And this is, comes from Literacy First. And you will see that the very top column or top table has to do with phonological awareness. And you can see that we start our phonological awareness skills in pre-K, and then they run up into kindergarten. And there's even some in first grade. So our teachers know, our pre-K teachers know that students in pre-K need to be working on spoken word and segmentation of sentences and rhyme recognition. Then if you go down to the next column or the next, I guess, table, you'll see that that goes to phonics. So those are the phonics skills that the pre-K teachers will be working on. You can see that there are six there, eight. And then, the kindergarten have four. Four phonics skills they'll be working on for students to master throughout the year. And then, there's one that first grade will be working on. And then you go down, well, here's the phonics. There's still more down here, I'm sorry. You can see where we have dates mastered. And our teachers use this to help them track where students are so they'll know exactly what phonological awareness skills they don't have, what phonics skills they do not have. And then also, we have comprehension skills. If you'll look down at the, one, two, three, the fourth one down. Kindergarten is working on basic signal words like who, what, where, when, and why for comprehension. So that students, when they read text or text is read to them, they're able to talk about, who is the story about? What was happening in the story? Where? Where was the story happening, like the setting? And why, why did where they having the problem they were? So that's the comprehension part of it. And then you can see that in first grade, that gets a little bit harder. It goes into character setting, events, problems, goal, solution. That's basically the plot. So this is something that, we have this on every single student. We hope that we're done with it by the third grade, that they have all these skills. And we test them and retest them routinely to make sure that students have these. But this is one of the things that Literacy First does for us. It gives us a framework. It gives us a map and sort of a path to follow. So I hope that helps a little bit. Phonics is a method of teaching that emphasizes letter-sound relationships. When children are taught, for example, that the letter "n" represents the sound "n" and that those letters are in words such as "noise", or "nose", "nice", and "new". So phonics and phonological awareness are a little bit different. And those are things that our teachers learn about when they go to literacy-first test, or literacy-first training. Vocabulary is individual word meanings in text and what those concepts convey within that text. If they can't figure out the vocabulary, they're not going to be able to understand what they're reading. And then comprehension are the skills and strategies that help them to develop background knowledge and verbal reasoning and to understand what they've read and communicate about what they've read. Comprehension, so for example, a student could be really great at phonics and they could be a good word caller, meaning when you listen to them read, they sound like they're a good reader, but they don't understand what they read. So their comprehension is low. So if these are five essential components of literacy and they're missing one, we have to diagnose that. And then we have to address that issue. As a principal, I would listen to kids read and I'd be like, wow, this kid's a great reader. But what I was listening to was them call words. I was listening to their fluency. They were fluent readers. They were able to decode words, but they weren't able to answer questions about what they read. Does that make sense? And fluency is the ability to read text with sufficient speed and accuracy, and that supports comprehension. If a student is really struggling getting through text because they can't, their phonics are not good, then they're not going to, by the time they get through the text, they're not going to understand what they've read. So it could be a fluency problem. So those are all things that we have to diagnose within tier-one so that we can place them in a tier-two intervention and focus those interventions on exactly the holes that they have. So what does Literacy First do for us in Ponca City? It shapes teachers to become more consciously competent about the reading process. They learn about these five components of reading. They learn about how to test these components. They learn about how to, different practices that support these components. They just become better literacy instructors. It refines a teacher's instructional skills. It strengthens a principal's instructional leadership skills. Provides a common language of literacy instruction among the staff. If you get our kindergarten, first, second-grade teachers together, they can talk to you about this continuum inside and outside. They know every skill on it. They can talk to you about that skill. They can talk to you about what that skill means. And they can talk to you about different strategies or different pieces of curriculum that they're using to address it. It provides best practices for literacy instruction and it builds a framework and a culture to support reading achievement. This is the Literacy First framework. And I'm not going to go over every part of it. But basically, it consists of three different big components, which is a language-rich environment, providing a language-rich environment for students, a culture of literacy learning, and a promotion of thinking skills. So if you're talking about thinking skills with students that we want to make sure that we're developing in class, we want to develop higher-order thinking with students. We want to develop questioning with them. If we're talking about providing a rich, a language-rich environment, we want to make sure that we have word walls up and that we're using word walls to teach, that we are teaching vocabulary explicitly to students. If you're talking about a culture of literacy learning, you're talking about making sure that you're protecting your academic learning time, that you are planning using the anatomy of a lesson, like what should be in a good reading lesson? What pieces should there be in that? Because it's not as easy as just getting up there and talking about reading. It's not as easy as just passing out some books to students. It has to be something that's systematic and explicit. So some of the best practices that we learn through Literacy First are making sure that you have good, solid, whole-group instruction in place. And Mrs. Cox talked a little bit about this. All of our teachers in the elementary schools here in Ponca City are required to have at least a 90-minute reading block. That is per the RSA law. So their reading block has to be at least 90 minutes. Some of them are a little longer. And so, they go in and they teach them how to teach those comprehension strategies with explicit instruction. Our whole-group instruction, and that's what you guys are probably familiar with when you were kids. When you were kids and you were in school, your reading teacher got up and she taught everybody, correct, at the same time? So that's basically what that is. They're teaching out of journeys. Everybody has that same curriculum across the district. That is their curriculum that they're using to teach their whole-group instruction time. We also have small-group instruction. And that includes guided reading, a teacher pulling students back into small groups and focusing that instruction on what those students need. Fontis and Pennell say about guided reading, "There's no guarantee that a student will develop effective reading strategies simply by choosing and reading any book or being assigned to read a selection and answering questions." Just because you assign a book to a child and say, "Read this and answer these questions", that's no guarantee that they will become good readers. It often takes some focused, targeted instruction to get them where they need to be. Centers are also something that Literacy First promotes. Centers are used to provide small groups of focused activities that students will do. During centers, it needs to be work that students are, it's review. It should be work that they've already done. When students are meeting in centers and they're working on practicing skills that the teacher's already taught, that allows the teacher to pull small groups back and work with them while the rest of the students are working on practicing some of those skills. Also, monitored independent reading practice. Have any of you heard any teachers talking about MERP? Or ever heard anyone say anything about MERP? It's something that we talk a lot about. It's something that principals are constantly monitoring. And MERP stands for monitored independent reading practice. Research shows us that it's very important that students read every day for pleasure, but that's not really enough. We have to monitor them reading. So that means that the teacher has to pull students back, listen to the students read, ask them questions about their reading, make sure they're reading a just-right book, not a book that's too hard, not a book that's too easy, but one that's going to help them to grow as a reader. And then also, allowing students to talk a little bit about what they've read. One-to-one, let's see, sightword lists. This is another thing that we work really hard on in our pre-K, kindergarten, first, and second-grade classes. Literacy First comes out with three sightword lists. Sightword list A, B, and C. List A contains 100 words. List B, 200. And List C, 300 words. Sightwords are words that they don't decode. They don't sound them out. They should be words that they see and they're able to call. Just, they're able to just say them, like "the" or "and" or "then", those kinds of words. So sightwords are really important to establish and help with fluency because we don't want students to have to sound out the word "the". They should just be able to say that quickly and move on. There are words they're going to have to decode, but not sightwords. So they work on List A in kindergarten and first grade. Then they move on to List B. And List C is mainly a second-grade word list. Word walls are also something that Literacy First teaches us about. They are teaching walls. They're used so that you can post your sightwords up. Teachers put the alphabet up. They'll put alphabet words or just letters across. And then the words will be put in alphabetical order on their board. And then they use that, they use different activities, word wall activities, to sort of drill students with those sightwords and to help them to get them in their memory so that they can develop their fluency. You should be able to go into any of our primary classrooms and see word walls up. And it's not enough to just have it up. You have to use it. It is a teaching wall. So if you just display it and it's there, it doesn't do you a whole lot of good. That, this is our continuum. Again, this is something that we keep in all our students' RSA folders. And a lot of the interventions for students in kindergarten through second grade are based on the skills on this continuum. Okay, I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk to you about the three tiers of intervention. Mrs. Cox referred to this a little bit when she was talking to you guys in her presentation. In Ponca City, and really probably throughout the state and the nation, there is a thing called RTI. And it is, the response to interventions is what that means. And it is a multi-tiered approach to the early identification and support of students with learning and behavior needs. So I'm going to be talking to you about the way we use it for academics. But we also have sites that use it for behavior as well. So each of our teachers teaches a 90-minute reading block. And that's tier-one instruction. That means the teacher's getting up there. She's pulling out her journeys. And he or she is using that core reading program to teach those five essential elements. Everybody has the same curriculum. A lot of them are probably teaching some of the same lessons every day because they're following the same curriculum map. We probably get about 60% to 65% of our kids in Ponca City in tier-one. That instruction is good enough for about 60% to 65% of our kids. But the other percent, they're not getting it in tier-one. Now, it used to be, when I was a kid even, the teacher got up and the teacher presented. If you got it, you were lucky. If you didn't, they moved on. But we know that that's not effective now. You can't just move on. You have to identify, okay, I taught this and they're still not, they still don't have it. So they're not making the progress they need to with just my whole group tier-one instruction. So because they're not on grade level and they're not moving along, that the way that they need to in tier-one, I'm going to have to put them in tier-two and give them some extra intervention to get up to grade level. Okay? So like it says up there, RTI begins with quality instruction in tier-one. If you don't have quality instruction in tier-one, you're going to have more kids in the bottom 25th percentile than you can pull up. And so you have to look at that as a leader. If you've got a lot of kids, a lot, in the bottom 25th percentile, you have to kind of start deciding as a principal, okay, is this because of attendance, like Ms. Hargreaves was talking about? Or is this because we have some weak instruction going on in tier-one? And that's where, as the principal gets in and does evaluations on that teacher, they can see, is this effective instruction that's happening or not? So if a child is not getting everything they need in tier-one, then we move him to a tier-two intervention. So that's above and beyond their tier-one instruction. And when we get to tier-two, we have to decide what exactly do they need help on. We can't just guess. We have to know.
So you have all the students do the tier-one instruction?
Yes.
And then you hold the ones out that are having trouble?
Absolutely. That is how it works. All kids get tier-one, everybody in Ponca. And those that are not making adequate progress in tier-one go to tier-two. Every school has tier-two interventions going on in their school. And they're flexible. So for example, let's say that Dr. Pennington, most of the time, he's doing great in tier-one. He doesn't have any problems. But he gets to, let's say he gets to key ideas and details and he's just not getting it at all. He's just not doing well. That part, he's just falling behind. And the teacher's taught it several different times and he's still just not getting there. So that teacher will put him in a tier-two intervention. And he'll be in with the group, with everybody that needs that, key ideas and details. And so he may be in that just for, until he gets that skill. And then when he gets that skill, he'll be out again. He'll just be right back. Like I said, every day, they're going to get tier-one. But he may only be in tier-two for just a little amount of time, depending on how he responds to that intervention. So tier-two's inflexible.
On this template, because what we're talking about is everybody's treated the same and then some will need extra. How do you keep the measurements from teacher to teacher, school to school consistent? I mean, so it's not a subjective. I think I did okay, Dr. Pennington didn't. I mean, how does, are teachers trained on exactly how to measure?
Yes. That's a really good question. That is a really good question, Robyn. Yes, they are. That's part of the Literacy First training. They train them exactly how to administer these. And if you haven't gone through the training, then you really don't know how to do it.
So it's not a subjective on the teacher's part?
No.
Okay.
No. And then also, we use, of course, our CFAs, Common Formative Assessments, where everybody's teachers just make them up. And/or, we also have district benchmarks that we give. We give them every quarter in kindergarten through fifth grade. So RTI is designed to use when making decisions for both general ed students and special ed students. So it doesn't matter whether you're a special ed student or whether you're a regular ed student. Tier-two gets you where you need it. Okay? If you're not responding in tier-two, so if you're not growing and those holes are not being filled in tier-two, then you will probably be referred to the CART process. And the CART process is the Care and Response Team, meaning you have to go through CART for a certain amount of time. Is it six weeks?
Yes.
For six weeks before you can be referred for special ed testing. So that's another thing. Every single time a kid is struggling, we're not just going to automatically say, oh, they need special ed testing. Because maybe they just need a little bit of extra help. And then they'll be on track and they'll be fine. So that's why they're in tier-two. It's flexible. Kids move in and out of tier-two all the time. It's very targeted. It has to be targeted on what they do not know. And then if they're not responding in tier-two, they're carded. Then they're checked for progress with the CART team. And then they are, again, if they're still not making progress, then they're referred for special ed testing.
Are the parents aware of this, what tier they're in or whether they get referred throughout?
Yes.
So the parents are kept advised?
Yes. During parent-teacher conferences, teachers are talking about tier-two interventions, tier-three interventions. They talk about whether the student's on an RSA, whether they've qualified for RSA, and what they're doing to address those. And then they also talk to parents about what they can do at home to help. So in tier-two, it has to be high-quality, well, really in all, high-quality scientifically-based classroom instruction. And it also should involve some parental involvement. Like what can you do at home? Have your child read every night. Go over sightwords with them. Make sure that you check their homework. Those kinds of things that parents can do at home. This is just a visual of the RTI process. With our curriculum, you can see the bottom. That's the biggest base. That's our tier-one instruction. And our reading curriculum for that is journeys. Everybody, the same thing. That's our core reading instruction. It's at least 90 minutes. Then when you get up to tier-two, you see that that's your core reading. Plus, this is extra time. It can be, in tier-two, your intervention could last from 15 minutes to 45 minutes. If it's kindergarten kids and they need help every day for about 15 minutes on sightwords, it may only last 15 minutes. It really has to be what the child needs. And so we use a variety of different materials in our tier-two. Tier-two is the one, it's the most prescriptive because we are really trying to catch kids before they fall there. That's where we're really trying to hone in and get these kids back up where they need to be so that they can be successful with just the tier-one instruction. And so when we come in and, well, anytime I've come in and I've been asking for you guys to purchase something, it's usually for tier-two. So you could go to any of our schools and they might be telling you, okay, so for example, this could be confusing. So Robyn, you might go to Roosevelt and you might say, okay, what are you guys using in tier-two? And they might list off a few things. They may see, oh, we're using Fontis and Pennell kits for guided reading. We're using Read Naturally to help with fluency. And we're just drilling kids on sightwords. So they may say those three things. Well, then you may go over to Garfield and Mrs. Cox may say, oh, well, we're doing System 44 and we're working. And she may tell you something else. And then you might be going, well, why are they doing something different than what they're doing? Because tier-two has to be prescriptive, because it has to be focused. They have to look at data. They have to decide, this kid is not making it in tier-one. We've got to do something to make sure that they get these skills they need. So where are they lacking? Is it fluency? Then maybe we should try Read Naturally because that's a program that helps with fluency. Maybe we just need to have them read more and do more monitored independent reading practice with them. So they decide what's going to be the best approach with this student. If they find out that it's comprehension, then they may use something different. They may do close reading with those students. Does that make sense?
So it's the principal's decision?
It's really the team's decision. It's really the PLC's team. The PLC team gets together. And the principals are part of that. And they look at... And they look at data, and then they decide, okay, these kids are struggling with fluency. What are we gonna use to help their fluency improve? These kids are struggling with sight words, so how are we gonna address this? These kids over here are having trouble with comprehension. How are we gonna address that? Okay?
If you're looking at that at each school, why don't they all do the same thing?
Yeah.
You know, that's what I don't understand. And then they go to another school, and they get something else, and it's completely different.
Because, as a teacher, as an ex-teacher, not all kids learn the same way. What works for Garfield, we did System Forty-Four. That works with her kids. What Roosevelt does works for their kids. And you have to have a whole lot of things.
You really do.
To get those kids, not every kid's gonna learn the same way.
And a lot of them do use a lot of the same things, but what I'm saying is, they may not be using the same things at the same time. Most of them have Read Naturally, but maybe they don't have kids at this time that are struggling with fluency, so they're using something different. Okay? Does that make sense? I'm trying, I mean, this is the whole reason I'm doing this, is to try to help it make sense for you guys, so.
We have one textbook, the Journeys textbook. Everybody does that. Okay. But then the, the people, the little kids that can't quite get that, you've gotta try a lot of different things. That's why they come to us and ask us, in the curriculum meeting, to do, to buy separate programs, you know, for this one or that one. And it's not, they've never come to us and asked for great sums of money, but it's to, to try to hit every child and what they need to be a better reader.
Terry, those interventions, like Fontis and Pennell, we have that at every site?
Yes, we do.
Close reading?
Yes.
We're trained all across the district in that. The, uh, what do we have that would be unique to a site?
Well, the, really, the only things that we have unique to a site, like that no one else has, is, um, Liberty, Lincoln, and Garfield all have Voyager. And the reason they were given that was because the state gave it to them because they were on the improvement list. So they use that. Our other schools don't have that, um, and they have found it to be beneficial, but their kids are different from the kids at Woodlands, Union, Roosevelt. Maybe they just need, I'm, I'm not saying it wouldn't benefit everybody, but it was given to them. But, like, all of our schools have Read Naturally. It, they just may not all be using at the same time. They all have Fontis and Pennell kits, um...
But isn't Lori the only one using System Forty-Four?
Yes. She is.
It kinda goes back to what you're saying, Dawn.
Well, because that was, you know, a pilot for us to see if it would be successful with our students.
And they picked our school with the lowest scores.
Yes.
Oh, that's that one from last year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I remember doing that, I didn't catch the name of it.
Right.
Remember it was that?
Right. And, you know, we, we had a long debate on that because of the cost.
Right.
Yeah.
And wanted, and again, how successful would it be?
Right.
And then another, um, program that you purchased was the McGraw-Hills Corrective Reading and Reading Mastery. If you'll remember, a couple of years I came to you ago, and I said that this was a scripted program, and that we wanted to try it out with our special ed students. And we brought in training for that, and all of our, all of our special ed teachers at every site are using corrective reading and reading mastery. And that is, that is the most intensive intervention that you can have. So they diagnostic, give diagnostic tests to students at the beginning of the year. It tells them exactly what those kids are missing, and then those kids are prescribed. They're put in the lesson that's gonna help them fill those holes that that test showed. Okay? So, and they, so they all do that. Really, the only thing that's different is Tier Two. And it's because Tier Two's flexible. Tier One, we do it all the same. Tier Three, we do it all the same. Literacy and intervention frameworks, um, once the literacy and intervention frameworks are in place, and we have those in place right now, then we have to have curriculum that needs to be adopted to address student needs. So again, that's kinda what I've already talked about, about, like, we have this framework in place. We, we know how to teach kids reading. We train teachers how to teach reading through Literacy First. We know that we have to have those five components. Um, but then we have to get curriculum to be able to teach, teach those. You can't do it without curriculum. So that's why we adopted Journeys last year. Um, literacy, the Literacy First framework we use designs well-rounded literacy programs at each of our elementary schools. Teachers receive training in Literacy First to give them the foundation they need to be effective reading teachers. And response to intervention framework we use to guide our interventions. Interventions must occur to address the needs of students that don't perform at grade level through Tier One or classroom instruction only. So oftentimes, curriculum or programs have to be purchased to address the targeted needs of students in Tier Two and Three. And some examples of some of the curriculum that we have in each of those tiers. Um, Tier One, district-wide, Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt Journeys reading series. All of our teachers have been trained in it. Uh, we have our instructional coaches that are pulling pieces of that into PLCs and talking about it. And then also, during our district PLCs, they're bringing different aspects of it and saying, I used this for, for this last week, and you guys ought to try it, and I liked this piece of it, that sort of thing. Um, some of our Tier Two intervention sources are System Forty-Four at Garfield, Literacy First Phonics and Comprehension Kits. Every site has those. Voyager Passport, Fontis and Pennell Guided Reading Kits. All of our sites have those, sort of success, all sites have them. Many of them have SRA reading kits, Read Naturally, and the list kinda goes on and on of what you would be using just based on student need. And Tier Three for reading, McGraw-Hills Corrective Reading and Reading Mastery. Some of the training that we focus on to try to support the Literacy First framework is Literacy First Phase One and Two. So Phase One takes them sort of through the science of reading, and how to, uh, how to give those tests and assessments. And then Tier Two helps them to set up their centers, make sure that they're doing guided reading the way they're supposed to. PAIN Phonics, the reason that I had brought PAIN Phonics in is because it supports phonics and phonological awareness instruction. Kagan Cooperative Structures, that's something that we've been focusing on, because it allows students to talk about their learning, and we know that that's a very important when it comes to comprehension. We, uh, we give training to our new teachers every year for guided reading and close reading. Nonfiction writing is also something else that we continually train on, and our instructional coaches talk about this every week in PLCs. We have sent people to letters training, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. The reason that we had kinda sent some to that was because the state started offering that for free. It does support Literacy First. And then we have sent some of our staff members to the Lucy Colkins Reading and Writing Institute. Any questions?
Yes. On the Tier Two and Tier Three, that's obviously individualized. Where does both the instructor and the student get the time? Because they gotta be giving something up to go to it. I assume it's more of a one-on-one or a small group type setting.
It's small, it's small group.
And I assume they're each gonna take two or three hours a week?
They have to just build it into their schedule.
But what does, what does the rest of the class do when the teacher's going over that with them?
They do it a lot of different ways. Some of them, it's a pull-out, so the students will be pulled out. For all Tier Three, it's pull-out. They go to the special ed teachers.
Special ed teachers do all Tier Three?
Yes. And so Tier Two, the teacher could be taking the students that need the most help, and a TA may come into the classroom and be doing some rotations. They could do centers. And so students are working on centers while the teacher pulls back students that need Tier Two intervention, and she works with them. We have TAs pull students out of class and work with students. It's done in a variety of different ways. And it can get pretty complicated.
Yeah. I can see what you're saying.
A lot of moving parts.
Without a TA or without somebody else, you gotta be careful, you got kids just sitting there.
Well, and that's another reason why Literacy First training really helps them, because it really helps them to put procedures in place in their classroom so that they can meet with kids. You would be amazed at, uh, the way some of our teachers work it like a master.
But from the student perspective, they're having to give up an hour or two a week, or three or four, or however many of something to go to this program?
No, they don't, they don't give up, they cannot give up any reading instruction, they can't give up any core instruction.
How do we give something up, or they don't have an extra three hours?
They have a ninety-minute block to work on reading, isn't that right, daily?
Yes, and then, but it's on top of it. Tier Two's on top.
But if it's on top of it, they gotta come up, it's gotta come up from somewhere.
Yeah. You know what? I'm gonna let Lori talk about that. Lori, how do you get it all in? She has a great schedule.
I guess I thought it was...
It is, and I will email you my schedule if you'd like to see it.
No, I, I can see it from the instructors.
But you can get it, right?
But the student.
Yeah, but it's actually intervention in third and fourth grade with the System Forty-Four is a full hour a day. It is what they're doing is while they meet with those students, and for everybody else it's forty-five minutes, while they meet with those students, then there are planned extension activities for those students who don't need it. And, um, a lot of times, for example, I'll just use, um, first grade as an example, I have, both first grade teachers are having that forty-five minutes of intervention at the same time. Plus, there's two TAs that go in their room. So we have four groups of Voyager intervention going at the same time. Then I have another TA that goes in, Title One TA, and the teachers have planned extension and enrichment activities for those students that don't need intervention. And then that TA oversees those students and their enrichment and extension activities to make sure that they're staying on task and doing what they need to do. For some of them, it, it may be doing the ST Math. Um, for others, it, it may be working on some hands-on enrichment activities. And so they're, they're not just having to sit or do busy work or color sheet or something like that. We're taking them on to their next level too, while the other students are getting intervention. But because they are more able, they can do things a lot more independently.
You know, it's, uh, elementary classrooms are always interesting.
You oughta go get them one.
And for, especially for a...
Yeah, he really should.
For a secondary teacher or somebody who went to school long enough where we sat in our desk and sat in rows, and they were straight, and, uh, you don't see that in elementary classrooms today, especially at the, at the young, early levels. You'll see students, and yes, the teacher's at their desk, and they're doing a reading group, but you've got different groups of kids doing different activities. And, uh, the ability of a teacher to sit here and work with these four students at the same time, to be able to look over and say, John, you're supposed to be doing whatever it is that John's supposed to be doing, is, uh, pretty remarkable. And, uh, it is a juggling act, and, and, uh, you know, I have a great appreciation for what our elementary staff does.
How, how many, do you do that daily, that Tier, Tier Two?
Yes.
Daily? How many minutes?
Yes. And like I said, it depends.
Oh, different.
Yeah, it depends. It's flexible.
Oh, it's not, it's not a certain amount.
State says it has to be less than thirty-five minutes a day, and depending on the grade level, we do forty-five minutes to an hour every single day.
Well, and they changed it, though. They said that this year, yeah. With RSA, before, they had said it had to be forty minutes a day, but this year, they have changed that to a flexible time. It could be, if a student needs twenty minutes, it's twenty minutes. If the students need up to forty, then it's up to forty.
Right now?
And like with, at Liz's, uh, school and a lot of others, like, all the kindergarten teachers will have their intervention at the same time. So, she's got four teachers over there, so you've got one of those kindergarten teachers working with one tier of students, another one working with another, another working with, you know, so there's four groups right there. And then TAs flood into those classrooms also, and they take other students, and they're doing things with them as well. Lot of moving parts, a lot of training students, but it is remarkable what they can do.
Couple of questions, and I'll ask Liz and Lori this. So how does class size affect this?
Well, I have, and I don't know if I should say this out loud or not.
No, it's all right.
My classes are smaller this year, for the first time. I know, yay. Um, and I think it has helped a whole lot. My class sizes are not smaller. We're bumping twenty-four and twenty-five. And in high-poverty schools, that's significant. The research says that they're the most affected when you have the larger class sizes, because they do come to us, like Liz showed on her slide with her kindergartners, two percent being on grade level. They, they need a lot more intensity and a lot more help in catching up, and the more bodies you put in there, and you divide that times the teacher's time, the more difficult it is. So I would say that it, and I know at Garfield, at least, it impacts us.
And for the, for, for the layperson, so we see lots of great things. We've got Tier One instruction, and, and, uh, we're doing Tier Two instruction, and we've got a Literacy First framework, and we're keeping track of all these things that kids do. Why aren't all of our students proficient in reading?
Because some of our students are kind of fifty yards behind the starting line when they come in, and some kids start on the starting line, and some kids come in with very enriched lives, and they start fifty yards ahead, you know, beyond the, the starting line. And so they're all starting at different places. And, you know, I have followed some of our students since I've come to Garfield, and a lot of our students that flunked the third grade reading test that we did not hold back at Garfield scored proficient, and were on grade level at the end of fifth. It takes them a little bit longer. It just takes them a little bit longer. They got there, and they were proficient, but they didn't do it by the end of third grade, but they did do it by the end of fifth grade.
And also, not every student has someone to read with them at night, unfortunately, for one reason or another.
The vocabulary size of the students determines a lot. There's, there's a lot of vocabulary enrichment that has to go on, because like Terry was talking about, and you listen to a kid reading, they're a great word caller. You're thinking, they are gonna rock this, they're gonna, they're gonna do well on, on the test, you know? But the thing is, is they don't understand what a lot of those words mean. Those aren't words they hear every day in their life. And so they can decode the word, they can read it, they have no idea what it means. So finding time for that rich vocabulary development is, is also important. And then, going back to what you said, the more kiddos you have crammed in the classroom, the less able you're, you can do stuff like that, because more of your time is spent with classroom management. The more students you put in a class, it's like, um, you alluded to, how does a teacher keep all that going? Well, the more students you have, the harder it is to manage the class and keep it going. And so four or five students going from twenty to twenty-four or twenty-five can make all the difference in the world. That's the difference, and one more read allowed you could have fit into the day that would have been, uh, a vocabulary-rich literature that they could have, that could have exposed them to what they needed to be exposed to.
Terry, again, I thank you for that, and we need to move, we need to move on. I just would say this, you know, sometimes we, uh, the things that we do well, we have a hard time understanding why other people don't do them well. And, uh, when you're in a position where you're, uh, you know, a lot of adults, members of Boards of Education, who, who read well, and who, you know, uh, reading came easy to, or easier to maybe than some subjects did, uh, sometimes it's hard to understand why not everybody does things as well as we do. And I, and I, I know our teachers work hard, and I appreciate the work they do, and, and, uh, and again, you know, thank you to, to your staff for doing all this. Uh, you know, we've been, we were probably a pioneer in, uh, in Literacy First. Marvin was on the board when we adopted, Judy was in the classroom.
Was in the classroom. Way more of a pioneer, let me...
Uh, we've been working at it a long time, and, and, uh, and we will, we have to continue to work, because we have staff members that leave, and we have to retrain, and it's not, it's not a one-shot thing, you do it once and you're done with it. But we continue to work and push, and, you know, I don't know if we'll ever get there or not, but our goal is that all of our students will be proficient in reading. That's what we're shooting for.
And Dr. Pennington, I would say that, as far as that Literacy First continuum, our students are, overall in our district, really strong in phonics. But when they get into the third, fourth, fifth grade, it is that vocabulary deficit that they do not have, and that background knowledge that they don't have, because they don't have those rich experiences.
Okay.
Okay.